Like to call this meeting to order on October tenth, two thousand twenty-three Tuesday night, five o'clock. And like to review the minutes from September twelfth. I need a.
No, that's a move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you ready?
I'm ready. Yes.
Go ahead.
Uh, I did not give you a formal financial report because there was no new concerns to point out in the uh, budget sheet. It did send the expense reports through the end of September. So if you have individual line item problems, let's chat about it. Otherwise, uh, make a note of the warrants. Uh, there were eleven signed electronically totaling fifty-nine thousand three hundred fifty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. Uh, any questions about the expense reports?
Let's do them in minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, on page one?
Yeah.
The two that are like fifty-one and fifty-three percent there, just, just ask a question. That's all.
So those are, that's salary and wages for accounting staff uh, in the business office, so central office. So that is split five ways amongst the school. And uh, the percentages changed since the budget was done. So I'll fix it for next year. It'll wash out that there won't be overages in those lines in the future and that we'll have funds to cover them. The uh, central office copiers, oh, I'm sorry, accounting software.
Yeah.
Um, that one actually is an overage that we will also have to adjust the budget. So we updated our programming last year and are just now seeing the price adjustments. So um, everyone's gonna have an overage in that line, all of our schools.
Will that line item be hired for next year to cover?
Okay.
But I just, I just wanna make sure I got it right. Fifty-nine thousand three hundred fifty-nine dollars twenty-nine cents. Uh, fifty-nine, three fifty-nine, twenty-nine. Yep. Um, and then you'll also see, I think we talked about last time, some teacher wage overages. The teacher line's about ten thousand over. I didn't make a note of that. That was in the minutes from last month. So that's gonna be recurring throughout the year. And then there's some other minor overages here and there. I, I think we're gonna be okay and have funds that can cover them. There's nothing overly dramatic in there at this point, but we'll keep an eye on things and we're still obviously watching the maintenance line because that is about forty percent remaining. So we've spent a good chunk of the maintenance budget already, which we also did talk about last month. Any other questions on this year? Okay. So I'll just make a quick comment. There's more to come in the upcoming months on this, but I just wanted to give an update that Darius and I are already looking ahead to the budget for next year. Things we're looking at at this time of the year are um, retirements that we're gonna have to pay out sick buyback or uh, longevity requests. And Wheatley did have um, our longevity requests come in and per the contract, that's four thousand a year for three years. And then we are expecting probably ten to fifteen thousand in sick buyback on the retirement for teacher contracts. So those two pieces together, that's a twenty thousand dollar increase to the budget. That's you know, one percent of our budget just about. So uh, when we're starting off at one percent there, it just escalates things. Um, it doesn't mean that we can't find a way to fund those pieces without increasing the budget. We can consider rural aid, which unfortunately we still don't know the numbers for this year. The state hasn't put that out yet. Um, but we are expecting that to be more significant than it has been in the past. Um, so we could consider using that. We could consider using S R funds, which we already do have earmarked the small amount that Wheatley has left for budget offset, but just conversations that we're gonna be having coming up in the next few months. So just want to put on your radar.
Did the town take care of the return with this year for us?
They did with ARPA funds. Okay, yeah. It might really be time, and I feel like a broken record when I keep saying this, we might want to try to build this into the budget if the town can afford that budget increase. I don't believe that they're gonna have ARPA funds. We're not gonna have S R funds. I don't, I don't know what their free cash looks like. We generally are having one a year the past several budget cycles. So it, you know, just a safety buffer for us. Um, it is a difficult thing to throw in the budget because you never know a year where that falls off if you don't someone have, have someone retire. So you don't wanna escalate your budget, but at the same time, if we're seeing one a year consistently for the past three out of five years, you know, we can also look at longevity and how long teachers have been in service and sort of predict what the next few years.
Make an educated guess.
Yeah, we definitely can.
What are the funds? I thought last time we met, there was discussion of funds that we have to spend. They were sort of obligated. Do you?
S R and.
Can cover this or?
It can. Um.
But we're reluctant to do that for?
So the reason I try not to pay salaries with it is because then you have to pay nine percent M T R S.
Gotcha.
But um, it doesn't mean that we can't pay, say, transportation costs from that and then pay the salary from budget. It's so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Obviously, you never will wear the G R S.
Yeah, we don't want to do that. You don't wanna lose nine percent on a, on a grant. Um, and rural aid will still, will be an option as well. This year's whenever they award it, which at this point, you know, mid-October, by the time they get districts the funds, you know, we're almost halfway through our budget year by December first. So it's, it's we'll spend it by July uh, first, but it's not putting schools in a good position.
Yeah.
Uh, but that is a conversation that we can have about using S R money as well. Or not S R rural aid, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Three hundred twenty thousand approximately is gonna be for F Y twenty-five?
Correct. Yeah. So just wanted to throw that out there. It's something we're gonna be talking about at every, with every school this year. That's it.
What do you have for us today?
Um, just a few tidbits. We had our first announced lockdown and for the year, state and local police were on hand as well as members of the sheriff's department. The deal went smoothly. It's always our goal to be prepared, but also not introducing frightening information to our students. I commend the staff and all participating police officers conducting exercise in a very non-threatening way, as, as much as it can be with his family, the top, the kids and. Um, we had our first all-school meeting. Uh, we've chosen to move our all-school meetings to Mondays this year, so that our music teacher, Rachel Ginton, can support the program. At our first meeting, sixth grade students taught the rest of us a dance that accompanied the song, "Soi Nataza." And it was so much fun. It was just really great. We started it. I was thinking, wow, never did a way to do that, like every day started to, yeah. With a school dance and then move on because everyone was pretty happy and festive.
Arthur gave him singing and you didn't know the words. He was trying, but it was very cute.
You can Google um, the video and watch the dance that the kids are doing. So if your family wants to learn that dance, you're.
Challenge accepted. Challenge accepted.
Um, our music teacher is great at bringing uh, music and dance from around the world to our kids. Uh, I was concerned that the sixth graders were not gonna be really in the mood to do that, but they were, they were all for it. So that was great. Um, we had our annual mum fundraiser. Our fifth grade students sold four hundred eight plants. Um, mum delivery day is usually one of my favorite days of the year, as we have all those plants surrounding our front yard for that day. This year, however, and you might guess what happened on that day.
It rained.
It rained. It poured. Um, it was pouring during the delivery and all morning as students were sorting orders, the students were not, at least it phased by the rain. And I would like to thank Lacy Kelly and Lola Stone for standing in the pouring rain to do all of that sorting. Yeah, we, we kind of love her for everything. Um, on such number twenty-seventh, the fourth graders went to Mike's maze again and they got a beautiful day, although after some rain, so there was a bit muddy in the maze. Um, students went through the maze in groups answering trivia questions about artificial intelligence, which is this year's theme in the maze. Our students, as always, represented us well and had a great turnout. Um, open house was last Thursday. It was very well attended. We have one hundred, we had one hundred thirteen of our one hundred and twenty-nine students represented that evening. And I feel like everyone was here right at five-thirty when it started, because when I went out to open the door, there were just a sea of people. It was wonderful. Um, so families visited various classrooms and spaces around the building. The P T O provided apples and apple cider. Thank you to the P T O. It was wonderful to see so many students and family members here. After reviving inside the building, many families congregated on the playground while children played. We don't usually have such mild evening temperatures in October, but it was a gorgeous night. Um, then just a couple of upcoming dates. We have another all-school meeting on October thirtieth. P D day November seventh, Veterans Day is only November ninth, and family conferences November sixteenth.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? No questions. Do we have any public comments tonight?
No.
Okay.
Thanks for your hard work, everybody. Your ongoing hard work.
Thanks. Unfinished business, uh, follow-up on a quality audit presentation on nine twenty-eight discussion.
Yes, I came from the chairs. Um, they just did a quick email. The one thing they just wanted to announce that it was an informational meeting. Um, because the actual, it was not a forum for, it was a forum for Wheatley, but it was not a forum for um, three to five committees. So they just wanna make sure that it was informational and um, that there's no minutes to it. And so I was letting the chairs know there's no official minutes to be in, because we have a forum. But we still went through with the information because the guy, uh, the guy Jim was from Oklahoma, so we're not gonna pay him for staying the night because we didn't have a forum. So um, and then um, I gotta put on all the agenda in case anybody wanted to talk about being, being followed to. So, you know, um, yeah, at this point, where, um, where we are in that work is that we're going to have a meeting this Thursday. No, it's next Thursday. Um, with the uh, equity, there is some equity committee. Then from that, we have the, yeah, there are already the broad planning for the district moving forward. We'll be efficient on that when we bring you guys over there.
Right. I thought it was a really interesting meeting that didn't happen. So.
Yes, yes, exactly. It was an informational session. There was no vote or anything, so. Um, I think we're in the spirit of being long, doing everything we can.
Um, Andrew, are you going to the M A S C conference?
I can't, no.
Okay. There was a. You know, I don't think that is going, so we could probably pass over the point official delegate. Because no one's going, or do we have?
Do you know what? Let's just elect you.
Okay.
If you don't go, you don't go.
Okay.
That way.
Do I have to?
If I have to submit it that way, I can't remember if I submitted or you bring it with you. If I submit, it'd be still okay for you.
You're already registered. On the, this form addition to the Congress registration form, okay?
Uh, so I mean.
I'll sign, I could sign this. You want me to sign this one and give it to you?
Yeah, yeah, I'll get you a second.
So we're not doing that or we're doing that?
It's Bob. Name of Bob's on the way. It's about one. With my committees.
If I didn't have something going on during that time, I wanted to go this year, but I got something else, you know, up going on and stuff, so.
It's also the holiday weekend. That, yeah, that's probably.
Is it what we do?
Um.
Veterans.
Veterans Day is that Friday.
What do they do that for?
They want a low attendance.
I don't know. Well, for some people, it's like, oh, I have the day off, so I can get down there. And then, I don't know. I always feel obligated to be at work during school day. And there's some districts where it's, they were, we're gonna work school, you know what I mean? So, I don't know, you going?
Is anybody going?
I'm sure someone's.
Okay.
I'll find out.
I know Carrie would. Carrie would ask me if I was going because she, her and I went before and you guys are down there, so.
You guys, the first of the October meetings, so unfortunately, I don't know.
All right, um, uh, we got some uh, first readings on these policies, D J, D J A, and D J E.
So as you guys know, the um, policy subcommittee is meeting to go through a list of policy that M A S C put out last year that we kind of brought to a meeting and then we realized there was just way too much just to adopt. However, meanwhile, coming out in August, they came out with additional updates. And so instead of putting these behind the ones that we're already waiting on, I'm gonna do these conventionally because there is, this is about purchasing. It's following the new laws and regulations that are putting in place. It's not, I don't believe it's, I can be corrected about admittances, but I don't believe it's anything that the committee is going to strike down because it is just legal jargon. Um, and within the policy, anything that ran is, they changed. Um, and crossed out, and you can kind of see that these are policies that we had. Um, but they've been updated to match the new procurement.
Yeah, and the biggest change with these is the D J E, which has to do with changing the limit. They increased the limit for bid requirements from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand for public schools. So it used to be ten to fifty. You had to get three quotes. Over fifty, you had to bid. Now it's ten to a hundred thousand. You need three quotes. And over a hundred thousand, you have to bid.
Wow.
It's not changed for municipalities, though, just school districts and regional school districts.
On your line, yeah.
Because I don't, personally, I don't think that most school districts have the capacity to do what it takes to bid these projects for one. And two, the cost of educational things is just going up so significantly that they made some changes.
And you get to, you know, smaller districts like this, surely, you know, who's taking on the coursework for the community membership. But a lot of schools don't have the procurement. So anything over fifty thousand, I already did it for, I already got posted. It's just the amount of dream.
I think it's really done for smaller school districts because like if you work for a city, the city likely has a procurement officer that the school district is working for, but especially rural schools.
Everything is, yeah. It's kind of like nothing is nineteen ninety-nine anymore. It's twenty-four.
Yeah.
Same thing with, nothing's fifty thousand, everything's sixty-five or seventy.
Well, we, well, we're gonna vote on these next meeting, correct?
Yeah, so we do a double read. We must be waive that policy. Um, there's no reason, and you should have a reason to waive that policy. There's no reason to waive that policy. So they could read here. You can take a long digest, come back with any other questions. I do ask a few questions regarding especially the uh, especially anything legal. We're not just gonna run by an attorney. Let me know ahead of time. That way I can give you the answer at the next meeting. Save it to the meeting. I may, I may go and answer it. This is really dry, but if there's more complex set of M P S, that's kind of how it works. So we do a reading and then we go to next meeting. That way they also, we can't like, Beth can't come and say that, hey, you know, you just passed a policy when I was here in this one meeting and, you know, that kind of thing. That's kind of why the rules in this. That's it.
Hey. Um, F Y twenty-five capital projects initial discussion.
All right. So we're starting to work on the capitalist today of the towns. Um, and and right now, um, Chrissy met with Bill Hilberth and kind of made a list of where.
We're all going down there.
There you go. Um, where we're at. And at the same time, um, we, I think we, this year, the school committee is gonna have to sit down with the select board and have a conversation about who's overseeing the where, you know, out of all, each, each county, each school district is run a little bit differently. And Wheatley is kind of an outlier in the sense that the, the town and select board have been overseeing major projects at the school, including like the energy audit and that kind of thing, which is great. But at the same time, in other towns, the school department manages everything, the school, everything inside the walls, so to speak. Um, and then works with the town and figure out and funding those kind of things. Um, and the reason why I say that is one of the big things that the administration would like to see get done is the addition of A C mini splits um, into the classrooms. And we've kind of broken that up over the phases. However, the town is kind of in a different group of insulating the building and then wants to look at, this is through informal conversations with people, wants to look at what is the whole overhaul of the boiler and the whole new system uh, more of a, more magnified kind of look. Um, I think the boiler, the boiler hasn't had any major problems. It's a type of boiler that could, that could run along for maybe five, seven, ten years. Um, even though it's already, yeah, exactly, not gonna work. Um, but we, you know, Frontier have a similar boiler and we went through years and years of preparing leaks before we even got to that. We haven't had any leaks since section, section failures and that kind of stuff. So I think that boiler can stick around. So waiting for the boiler to be officially needed to be replaced before we do any, have A C with all the rebates, good stuff that we can do. Um, is kind of where I'm leaning. However, I understand the other perspective, because the other perspective is that right now we're installing mini splits in uh, let's use Conway, for example, similar sized building. Where all the two rooms in Conway have been, have the um, heat pump, A C units. And, but they run independently of the boiler. So you technically could run the heat and the A C at the same time. And so we manage that by, you know, it's a small school and the student, it's not happening. Um, but the next step has been to build, to get a, yeah, a, yeah, my ability management system, G M S. Um, get a system where they, then you tie those in so that the two don't work against each other and that you can control it all from one thing, but that, that cost, that cost is probably a thousand dollars, probably more than that, a little bit more than a thousand dollars per room. And then the actual um, server or whatever, it's running off of, there's another thirty, forty thousand dollars.
I think the server here is already updated because it's the same as Frontier, but it, we still pay per unit to have it connected.
Right. And so, so we did it in reverse fashion because I thought it was more important to get the system up and running, even though it would be inefficient overall. Um, to have A C in those buildings, especially up at Conway, they had a um, moisture problem, nobody problem ones, because they have a flat floor. Same kind of thing can happen here. Um, but that was the reasoning for it. I can, I see some people say like, well, that's the most efficient way of doing it, but I always put operations in front of everything else. It's like get to A C in the room and then we can backfill the, the energy thing. So the same thing, we did the same model at Frontier and we're doing the same model at Deerfield. So um, similarly, head of his like Wheatley um, has an annual library and offices. Um, and I'm not sure they're gonna have the money. They have smaller problems and they're not having the money to go to A C just yet. So um, anyway, so to have that conversation, so on our list is um, phase one of the mini splits and we broke that into two phases of sixty thousand dollars each. Um, and we can do about six rooms. And um, with the rebate, we can get up to twelve rooms. Right now, we're with the energy savings that we get. And that was another reason why we decided to do it because we literally were, we can do a third more of the rooms. This is on this one saying fifty percent, but um, depending on what the rebate is that year, it may split. And so they are funding um, EverSource does have a funding program for that. Whether it'll be here in two or three years, because our concern was that the money was drying up, although we thought it was gonna dry ambition has dried up yet. So there seems to be more and more interest in um, putting mini splits for heat pumps in your buildings, coming off of, we'll get into the debate, but coming off of um, fossil fuels, who go into electricity, even though we make more certain electricity than fossil fuels, but it's eventually that's supposed to change.
Sorry, just, I wanted to understand the order that you're, like your process. You wanna do the boiler first?
No.
No.
I wanna add mini splits.
Mini splits first and not look at the boiler and insulation, things like that.
Right. Well, insulation's already being looked at.
Okay, and then.
Where are, we're done, right?
Right. So they just, they just came in and finished that. So they're, they're kind of going through the, the mini splits. Now they're looking at the, I believe the town wants to look at the uh, I don't wanna speak for them, but I believe they wanna look at the boiler replacement with the new system and then figure out how to do A C.
With the new system?
With the new system.
Do mini splits also do heat though?
Yeah.
But then they give the need of the boiler?
No, because they can only go to so, a certain low temperature.
Gotcha.
And then, um, and I'm not sure how efficient.
Right.
One would have to say the efficiency level of boiler versus that. However, on a, when you start getting like April, late April days, do you need to fire up the boiler? When your rooms are starting at sixty-five degrees, you get mini splits. You can just turn on the heat pumps there. You don't have to turn on, right now, we had to fire the boiler. Um, the newer boilers, when we get to that, they, they have far more stages in them. My Frontier's just putting new boilers in. They have three separate boilers. They can just turn on one and it's got twelve stages in it. So they can run one on very low and just get enough heat for the building without running. Last time we had to turn two Volkswagen-sized boilers to run it in it. I mean, it was just the amount of energy losses is pretty significant. So anyway, I don't, you know, if the town wants to do it one way and then we can be bought, sold on that, that, that's fine too. I don't know what happens when we get into a disagreement. Um, manually legally, what happens when you get into a disagreement, but um, we should have a conversation, we should probably have sit down a conversation with them about what is their plan and kind of have it out.
Well, one of the other questions would be if we had the money to do the project on our own without asking them to fund it, what would they say at that point?
Right.
You know, if we use rural aid, which we're not going to, but if rural aid continues to grow.
How's, how's our, uh, I know it's never perfect, but how's our um, our, I can't think of it. Who's school choice money?
Uh, I think we are gonna have, I wanna say like a hundred and fifty thousand projected at the end of the year. I don't think we wanna dip into that.
I know we always wanna leave it for a rainy day, but if we wanted to.
Yeah, we can talk about, we, we'll break down the numbers about, you know, we're gonna need outside help for the A C, because there's two other things on the projects. I mean, for the project.
Why don't you go through that?
The other one is the restrooms, um, in lower and upper boys and girls restrooms. Um, that's for just about ten thousand dollars. Um, and then the exterior door frames, the jams have to be replaced at um, about forty-five hundred per door. So it's just about fourteen thousand there. The stores are those, Chrissy?
The classroom exterior doors.
Right. They, if you look at the bottom edges, they, they're, they're rusted out over the years. Some of that's through probably rain, drainage from the outside's clashing back up, but they're starting to get to the point where they're gonna fail and then also create rodent holes.
I think we're there.
It's, it's, they're, they're in bad shape. But again, so off, off the A C, we're only looking around, you know, twenty-two thousand dollars worth of twenty, well, me, twenty-four thousand, if we're rounding up. Um, which is probably doables, um, and we'll have to decide when or not we go for a warrant. What do we have for internal monies? But we also wanna be talking to the town. Um, and given the fact that we have some other stresses on the budget this year, I'm not sure if we'll be paying for it internally.
I know I was always a firm believer, the school chose money for a rainy day, you know, but if we have, if we had extra, maybe that's part of the way to even fund, take care of the bathrooms and, and um, the door jams maybe. And, and so if they find out that we're, we're taking care of that in-house, maybe they'll think about giving us a little bit of money to do the first sixty thousand or whatever.
Right.
I, I would say if we um, don't, so we have a placeholder in the school choice budget of thirty thousand for special education slash special education transportation. Um, which the transportation need changed, right? We are no longer needing that. So.
At this moment.
Right. So I would say, you know, come spring, if that money is available, then we could do something. But I still think it's a conversation with the town because my interpretation of all the conversations we've had so far is that they don't even support the mini splits being installed if we have the money. So that piece might be a bigger.
They have other bigger ideas.
And if we want to secure the funding for the floors, bathroom floors, and then the door jams, that has to be done. I think they've requested capital paperwork by December.
Right. So we'll be bringing this to the next meeting. Um, and then I'll, I'll find out things, we'll go to printout about what we've done and what we're gonna pull it on.
Which I suppose at that point we could withdraw, you know, if we submit it and get it on the warrant, we could always withdraw it if we did have funds later and save the town that money.
Because if that's gonna be a non-starter, that mini splits are gonna be a non-starter, then there's other things on, on the list I'd like to consider.
Okay.
Like with our money versus the town?
No, just off, there's a fairly lengthy capital list here. Um.
Has it been?
Which I'm setting up for like priority.
Right.
Um.
Which we've done before from a number one towards number five or whatever. Don't we still have a running, somewhat of a running list of that already? So.
We, you know, we have the whole list here and, you know, um, I don't have a public data share, so. But I'll bring that to the next meeting and we can go through and we'll have that here too.
A lot of the ones on these lists, this list are big ones, so.
Can you share what some of those are instead of curiosity or whatever?
Um, so not a, not an emergency, but the the floor, the foyer needs to be replaced, the cafeteria, the carpet and hallways. At some point, the carpet in here.
Gotcha, okay.
Those don't all, obviously, have to happen at the same time, but there's different layers that, like, now you're doing the classroom floors, you did three or four at a time and then if notice, if the A Cs aren't going on there, if we wanna start adding those common spaces into that rotation of one year for a while.
I guess I was wondering if this would be an opportunity to start thinking about the roof as well, because that seems to be living large.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, there's that too.
Yeah, well, I'm just wondering like how you, yeah.
Right. And so, um, right, I, I, what I can do is I can, I can share with you, I'll send you a snapshot of the uh, Wheatley page. Because we have this comprehensive document that we usually pull a section out to share.
Okay.
Um, because it has all the things in wish lists and all this sort of stuff that wish list found in the hands of whatever somebody's gonna be questioning, why, you know. I've had people go to the bottom of the list and say, why is that? I've had people go to the bottom of the list and say, why is Eddie on the list? We're like, well, it's a placeholder. Well, I don't understand what's even, and then we start talking about something that's on line eighty-five, and it's, doesn't, you know, whatever, it's kind of like, it's broken up.
Gotcha.
Kind of go through it all, and so I'll send you a copy of this.
Thank you, great, thank you.
Yeah. But right, the other one is that, so we have, we call ones, which is what we want to do this year. If we bring the funding, then twos, if knocking on the door, and then three is a few years out. But, you know, replace exterior lighting with all L E D. Uh, we want to work for the energy committee on that. There's money out there that probably can, we're trying to look for different ways to fund these things as we look ahead too. Um, you have the same thing with the boilers and the, those kinds of things, so. All right, sir? All right, so next meeting, we'll bring that in and we'll be able to.
I don't have anything to collaborate with?
Yeah, um, I have a meeting in person for the first time in December.
Oh, good.
And I was just, yeah.
Love to hear what they.
I've worked with them before as a teacher. They do great stuff, so I'm excited to be on the other side of it.
Okay. Um, what do you have for us, Darius? Anything special tonight?
I got nothing. It's kind of new that, you know, we had our four-town safety meeting last week, basically the police departments, fire departments. E M T State Police all coming together from the four towns, and we discussed the safety protocols and that kind of stuff, so. In our first meeting, we meet three or four times this year. This year we have scheduled three times. And, um, we kind of came out of it, the need to do another, we do tabletop exercises. Last year we did evacuation tabletop exercises around gas leaks and that kind of stuff. Um, but on our target this year is to do active shooter. And kind of go through what is each role, because even, um, from the triage areas to whatever, to blocking off roads and that kind of stuff. And so we work as a group, and then we break up into each of the towns. Each of the towns talks about their specific sites, where, where do kids get moved to and those kind of things. Um, and that kind of thing, so just so, um, we have an idea of what happens in the agency. And then this, you know, for those listening. Um, that translates to when Wheatley had to be evacuated because of the train derailment, where it was, right?
It was a tanker roll or.
Tanker on the highway, so we had to evacuate the school, but we didn't exactly where to go and how we're gonna do it and how we're gonna do this, so. It, while it sounds gruesome on one end, the, the parts, the moving parts of it are just going on other ends as well, yeah, hopefully. The only time we have to do is if those simple, just move them.
I, I asked Darius today, I stopped by the office, I had assigned some stuff. I asked him about the, um. What did I ask you about today? I lose my screen, I'm sorry. But you told me that, oh, the generator. It cost us five thousand dollars. It cost us four hundred something dollars.
Came in to do the part after all that back and forth.
With the town?
They showed up and they said, oh, yeah, you're gonna be a part, you see, this one's boring, but, ah, thank you.
Cause I left.
The L D goes unfinished.
Nothing good there, okay. Cause I left this meeting, and went, I ran over there, locked the door, and they were already voting on it. To approve the five thousand or whatever for the generator and stuff like. All right, had all my notes written down, I was gonna be nice, but.
Firm.
But firm.
Now we got forty-six hundred dollars that we'd use for other maintenance on it.
Uh, if anyone else got anything, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
All right.